Good afternoon and very excited here to have a special show this Monday rainy afternoon here in Stewart. Going to have Commissioner Ed Campi that's here in my studio with me today. And we're going to be talking about a lot of pertinent topics that are happening here in Martin County. But before we go into that, I want to thank my sponsors, of course, Indian Town Marina. It's located inland on the Okeechobee Waterway, one of the safest places to store your boat during a hurricane. And not only that, it's a do it yourself and full service boatyard. So if you need any type of work done on your boat, that's the place to go. You can give the good folks at Indian Town Marina a call, or you can take your boat out there and work on it yourself. And all you boat owners know, if you have a boat, you know, it needs work. So Indian Town Marina, give those good folks a call, indiantownmarina.com. Also, the Martin County Fair Association, February ninth through seventeenth, it's coming up, the Martin County Fair, we're going to have Blackhawk as our headliner, Jordan St. Sir, he is the Christian music band group. And then we're also going to have a very special hometown gal coming back. Her name's Jess Lee, she's a Martin County High School graduate. She's coming back and starting her tour here, right here at Martin County Fair. She's a, just an up and coming country sensation. She just signed a label up in Nashville, a lot of great music. Jess Lee, look her up online, go to Martin County Fair on Facebook, and you'll have some links for Jess Lee. But she's going to be here on Friday, February sixteenth. Her concert starts at seven thirty, and we're going to have the high school choir out ahead of her concert. So it's gonna be a lot of fun, Ed, hometown coming.
A lot of exciting stuff going on, especially at the fair.
Oh, there is. And that's, I have to mention, one of the acts we're going to have here this year, it's not an act, but a ground vendor, X-Men. It's a very popular thing now, throwing axes.
Absolutely, I've thrown. We have, there's a store, a space up north of the Roosevelt Bridge that does axe throwing. And it's a lot of fun.
We're gonna have it here at the fair, so February ninth through seventeen.
I think that works at a fair.
I think it will. It'll be, it'll join in. We're gonna have a tiger act and all kinds of stuff.
This is your first fair?
It is my first fair, so very excited. It's gonna be a lot of fun. And there's really something here for everybody. And I can't wait for the fair food and the animals. I love the little animals. Do you have a favorite?
Absolutely. I'll tell you, you know, the fair in general has always been so remarkable. I know you've taken the steering wheel recently, and we're very happy that you have. But having been involved in trying to help you expand, you know, I've always said that you've sort of been a victim of the success here, because so many people want to come. It creates issues where you just have outgrown the space. So I really have always enjoyed it. I mean, sadly, my kids are all grown up now and, and don't come. We can't bring them for, you know, the ride tickets. And they, you know, pay one price and ride all the rides. But we have a lot of happy memories at the fair. And then I think, you know, there'll be a lot of great memories to come at the new site.
There will be. And tickets are on sale now at martincountyfair.com, speed of tickets. We have those advance prices. They're cheaper now if you get your tickets. So visit the website and we can get you all hooked up there. But Commissioner Campi, I appreciate you coming in here today. There's so many things that have been happening here at the county. But I wanted to step back for a vote that happened, I think it was last November, if I remember right. And that is a property on the corner of Martin Highway and Southwest Palm City School Avenue. This property really is probably one of the bigger stories towards the end of the year for the county commission. And it's one that you spearheaded. And in a nutshell, a developer was going to build about ninety apartment units there. The folks around there, especially in the Danforth community, said, I don't think that's a proper fit. And we're going to go into why the apartments were allowed there in the first place, and why you spearheaded. The county commission actually going back and they purchased the property from the developer. And we're going to talk about now what happens with the property. So this is a very unique case that we have not seen really before in the county. Where a developer is going to build the apartments, the county commission said, we're listening to our residents in that area. They want us to take that piece of property off the development market, at least for apartments. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I've got a little more information here. It was purchased for two point one million in August of twenty twenty-one from the developer. County paid four million, twenty-eight thousand in November twenty twenty-three. County assessed at one point eight million. So I think those numbers were something that surprised a lot of people. But I'm going to turn it over to you, Commissioner Campi, because you have the inside track of what happened with this property, why it was even zoned in the first place for multifamily.
I do. There's a, first off, thank you so much for having me. I wanted to start out by saying, you know, you doing this, not just giving me the opportunity, but, you know, having been someone who watches your shows, you are giving people in our community an opportunity to really share information that sadly, if it's not for you and just a couple of other almost grassroots opportunities, the public doesn't really get the opportunity to hear what they need to know. And the concept with the apartments is, is something very important. I would tell you that although it's a pretty big issue, it would have been, it could have been a really detrimental issue for Palm City residents, or all Martin County residents. And I'll explain why in a moment. I don't think most residents in Palm City even knew what was, what was possible there. So briefly, the history. Now, before we get too deep into the weeds of the details, the CRA is a community redevelopment area. Most people would know it as a main street. And there are six of them throughout the county, Jensen Beach, Rio, Golden Gate, Hobes Sound, Stewart, and Palm City. We used to have Indian Town, but when they incorporated, it became their own. So the concept is more easily identified, like with Bridge Road, or Jensen Beach Boulevard, or downtown Stewart, a true main street. Palm City is a little more spread out. We didn't truly have, until Map Road really started to have its revitalization.
It's just the last couple of years.
Correct. We didn't really have a true, like, you wouldn't identify like a main street in Palm City. We're working on it, but there wasn't. So what a CRA is, in a nutshell, is you pick a date in time, let's say twenty years ago, and you say, okay, on this date, the property value of the defined CRA area is, for argument's sake, a million dollars. And you say that seventy-five, you can change the percentages, but let's use seventy-five percent. The following year, whatever that value has gone up, so if it went to a million fifty thousand, you take that fifty thousand and you fund it into your CRA, which is designed to be reinvested back in for a multitude of reasons. And we have done that for decades. But the biggest frustration was that the money that was generated, and they're all different, like Jensen Beach is is pretty small, but it's got a lot of commercial and retail space. So it generates more money. In Palm City, so each of the dollar amounts is different. In Palm City, for quite a long time, they would, they would raise enough money to come up with a plan of what they would want to do on Map Road, but never enough money to actually do it. So it was very frustrating. They would put out these beautiful plans that were, you know, designed by engineers for three or four hundred thousand dollars. It'd hang around for a couple of years. Everyone would get excited. And then we'd say, but wait, we don't have the money to do it.
Sounds familiar.
Yes. Yeah, you can relate from the fair. And a lot of people have this. Like, imagine you're going to put an addition on your home, and you have enough to do the architectural plans, but you never have enough money to actually do it.
Right.
Well, back in twenty sixteen, when I had come back into office, that was a real, and there's not enough time today to get into the tug of war between pro CRA and anti-CRA factions. I'm pro CRA, especially now that we've really done. And if you haven't been to Palm City down Map Road in the last couple of years, I really encourage folks to come.
Commissioner Campi, I couldn't agree with you more. That Map Road has completely had a transformation. And the one CRA I always like to bring up for folks that have been in the area, I've been here fifteen years, Colorado Avenue in Stewart, what a difference that made.
Right. And when they originally talked about doing Colorado Avenue, there was a lot of people that were very angry, said it would never work. And some of these things, before you can really see the success, they have to, they have to roll out for, you know, several years before you can do it. Bridge Road, what Commissioner Jenkins has been able to do down on Bridge Road with his CRA folks, and I give a lot, ninety percent of the credit goes to Susan Corris and Jordan Pastoreus in Palm City. And they have other folks on their team, Jenna and Naomi and others, that have, a small group of people have really done a remarkable job in six different locations in the county. So back to Palm City, go back in time twenty years. Now, in Palm City, there was one supermarket. It was the Publix on Martin Downs Boulevard. It was a very large Publix, but as the community grew, the store became packed. You couldn't find a parking space. I'm talking, you know, beginning of the two thousands. And the goal, I'm not a commissioner then, Mike Dieterlizzi was the commissioner. And he was hearing from constituents how frustrating it was, is that Palm City only had one supermarket. Publix was originally, their deal was that once that store got really busy, that they would build the second store behind the post office, where one exists now. But back then, they weren't really rushing to build the second store. So Mike wasn't sure how to handle this situation. Now, if you also, if you've been here long enough, you remember in Stewart, on East Ocean, on the way to sort of Sewell's Point was Stewart Fine Foods. It was a great store. It was a local store. So Mike had made a deal with Joe Mazzaki, he owned Stewart Fine Foods, let's build a second store. And they did go ahead and build one in Palm City on Martin Highway. However, it wasn't zoned for that. It's a big difference to go from some more traditional residential zoning to build a supermarket or a shopping center, like a plaza. So Mike came up with a very good idea, I'm sure, along with the CRA board, that they would take the Map Road CRA designation, the zoning, and then the detailed designation of a main street. And he turned the corner at the post office and went all the way down Martin Highway, heading west to Berry. Because right at the end there at Berry and Martin Highway is where they built the Stewart Fine Foods store, the Plaza.
Isn't that Plaza, there's Hurricane Wings on the corner?
And then there's a county tavern there and some other retail. So then Publix decides, okay, we will build our second store now. And there's a long history of what happened there. Stewart Fine Foods did not hang around that long. There was another company that came in. And so we worked that out. So why did the CRA go all the way to Berry Avenue on Martin Highway, which is not traditionally a main street? That's why. Now, it doesn't make a difference for years and years and years. Now, the property that we're talking about, for folks that are familiar with the area, it's on Martin Highway, at the, it's in between a neighborhood and, like you said, Palm City School Avenue. So that was the back way to a very busy elementary school. Now, they redid the school, so all of the traffic that used to come on Thirty-Fourth Street now is going to go in and out, all of the bike, walking, and car traffic, for the teachers and the students are going to come on Palm City School Avenue, directly across from Danforth. Six acres there. Now, on the western side of the property, there is a easement, a driveway that takes you to the back neighborhood. And then to the left of that driveway is Danforth Creek. So as far as I'm concerned, the driveway and everything to the west of that is unusable, but it counts in your calculation as six acres, which becomes important a little bit later in the story. So really, there's four usable acres to the east of the driveway. It's called Newberry Court.
Okay.
I had looked at that property many years ago, who was owned for a long time by a local resident. And we tried to go back and forth on trying to save it. And he just wanted too much money for it. We tried to land swap his property for some other surplus property that the county had. And we went back and forth, and we just couldn't do a deal. I left office, I'm gone for four years. I come back and not hearing much about that property. Then all of a sudden, you know, like is normal, there just happens to start, people start hearing rumors, hey, the property's going to be sold. So I reached out to the person that was representing the original owner. And it wasn't him who sold the property to these developers, it was twice removed. They're going to build about forty townhomes, cute little cul-de-sac of townhomes. They reached out to the neighborhood, Oak Brook behind it, they reached out, and they did exactly what you're supposed to do. But then all of a sudden, that idea morphed from forty townhomes, which most people understood that, you know, look, we could get into private property rights, that's someone's property. They had an expectation to be able to develop on it. And they went around and spoke to the neighbors and got a consensus. But then it changed. They went from the forty townhomes to ninety apartments. Now, you're thinking, remember what I said, two of the acres is really not usable. But the zoning for a CRA is fifteen units to the acre, times six, ninety apartments. So legally, they're allowed to build it. Now, that's a problem for me as the local commissioner and other commissioners, because legally, they could build something that the community really would not want. So what do you do? We can't, our lawyers would tell us, unless you can give a compelling reason to deny it, you can't deny it. So then I would be there and sit and, you know, have to vote yes on something that the neighbors, and I don't just mean Danforth. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, well, there's the Danforth residents. Well, of course, they're the first ones. But Oak Brook is right behind them. And they put a group of those residents got together and notified me about it. Because until something elevates to my agenda, I don't know of every single thing that's happening in the county. Some projects are going to be approved at the staff level. Now, that's large enough that it would come to us. But by the time it comes to us, it's well into the development process. So I reached out to the neighbors. There was about fifteen different homeowners association. They asked me to come to one of their meetings. And a lot of the HOAs in the area, Piper's Landing, and Islesworth, Hammock Creek, a lot of different residential HOAs had reached out to me to say, look, we got to stop this. There was, you know, in terms of the developer and what they paid, they paid two point one million. They probably spent about a half a million dollars, and they didn't tell me, I'm guessing, to get a ninety unit project designed, engineered, planned, it would be at least that much money. So now they're up to two point six million. And so we didn't know what to do. So I came up with this idea, like I've told other residents that call me and say, yo, you know, the, the people behind me are tearing down all the trees. And I'd say to them, well, what are they doing? Well, they're building a house. I said, on your property? No, on their property. Well, I always tell people, if you don't like what's going to happen near you, the only thing you can do is purchase it.
That's right.
So that doesn't really change, even if you're the county. Now, the county doesn't do that. And I get that it could potentially be a Pandora's Box. But this was a very specific set of circumstances. The developer was at least willing to meet with our staff, I did not go to that meeting, meet with our staff to discuss, you know, what can we do here? They came up with the number of four million dollars. Now, three of my colleagues, Commissioner Smith and Jenkins and Heatherington, said, look, at least go through the process and see if it could work out, which I appreciate, because although we're district commissioners, we represent everyone in the county, and then they represent everyone as well. So, but quite often, we try to give a little bit more leeway to the district commissioner, knowing that that person is specific to the area. And so I was very appreciative. So what we did is, we had the property appraised. Now, had that appraisal come in low, lower than the asking price, I'm out of luck. It didn't. We appraised it twice. The first one was four and a half million dollars. The second was four million fifty thousand dollars. All right, well, that at least put us in. So then, when the neighbors reached out to me again, they said, okay, well, you just bought it. I said, no, you need to come to the meeting. You need to make your opinions known. And they did. And so thankfully, two more, two, at that point, two of my colleagues agreed. And I get it. Now, there was a lot of concern with, like, Campi's going to buy that property, and, you know, it's going to come off the tax rolls, and, you know, he's going to build a dog park. There was a lot of people that said, leave it alone, buy it and do nothing to it. Yeah, in a perfect world, that's a great idea, but that's not real.
Right, right.
We can't use taxpayer dollars to do something like that. There is some environmental benefit to the property, because it's right on Danforth Creek. And so the county's public work staff says, well, we could use a little bit of it, so we could purchase that off. My intention all along was that we would find a new owner to build something that would be appropriate to the community. Now, as a big supporter of property rights, I get it. However, when you're building in the heart of a community, especially these infill projects, it just makes sense to guess, the developer and the owner of the property can build what they want, but the community should have a say. You know, because I believe, especially with the school there, ninety apartments, one hundred and twenty-three parking spaces. Now, the architect who designed it is a local architect, and I thought he did a nice job for what he was tasked to do. It's hard to fit ninety units and one hundred and twenty-three parking spaces on that spot. And they did the best they could. But what it was really going to be is parallel to Martin Highway, two, three-story tall residential apartment buildings, right on the sidewalk, which is CRA zoning. So literally, you open your door, you step out onto your porch, you come down a couple of steps, you're on the sidewalk of Martin Highway.
Let me ask you, Commissioner Campi, this was created because of the CRA zoning. Now that the county has purchased that property, is somebody going back and re-drawing the boundary lines of the CRA zoning in Palm City?
That's a two-step approach. One, on the property that the county now owns, we can obviously, and we're in the process of doing that right now, figure out, how do we put this? It's not like I could, I've had people reach out to me afterwards to say, hey, now that the county owns the property, I'd like to purchase a piece of it, a twenty-five percent, a third, or all of it. Well, I can't make that deal. We're the government. There's a process, a request for proposals. It'll have to go out for public bid and contract. But we can shape the criteria of that proposal on what will and will not happen there. I think the residents everywhere have to understand, whether they do or they don't, they have to understand that when people own property, they can build within what they can. So the first thing is, for that property, we will control what it will be. But for the rest of it, it's a bigger process. But I would agree with what you said, that we could scale back that, that CRA boundary back off of Martin Highway, back around, so that it was truly back to Map Road. And that's something that, you know, obviously, my colleagues will have to agree to do. But again, it's in my district. They'll probably let me take the lead on that. The downside of doing that is that there are some projects, some properties that do generate revenue that cycles back into the CRA budget. You would lose that. However, that since Map Road is having a renaissance, I believe what we would lose on Martin Highway, you will gain back in the new projects that are happening on Map Road.
Okay, all right.
So I think it'll be a benefit, or at least it'll be neutral.
So I did have Kevin Boldenaw asked, he says, I hope there are funds available for road repair in old Palm City. Asphalt is deteriorating as you travel across the Veterans Memorial Bridge. He's concerned the money that was used to purchase this property could have been used in other places.
Let's discuss that. Two things. One, as I said, I don't have any intention of hanging on to the property for any kind of extended period of time. I met with our staff before Christmas, our legal staff, our growth management staff, our general services, not general services, public works to decide what do they need. And then we're right in the process now of crafting the language that will get that property back out. So there was, you know, the time that we're holding on to the money, you know, I know that there was a lot of talk between where do we get the money from. Now, to comfort and to allay some of the concerns that Martin County residents that live in Jensen or Hobes Sound or elsewhere might have, we were using district funds, which is, you know, MSTU dollars, that's at the discretion of the commissioner. I used all of them for that. And I can only, can only encumber them while I'm in office. So I can't do a four or five year. Now, maybe I run again and I win, so I would have four more years to encumber it. But I have one more year of this term. I couldn't do it for four or five years. The CRA has its own funds that's generated right there. So the people that would have the most adverse impact, if that were to happen, those apartments, they are the ones that's funding back into it.
Okay.
So it didn't come from other areas. In terms of using it for other projects, like repaving the Veterans Memorial Bridge, the Veterans Memorial Bridge is not in the CRA. So the money can only be cycled back into the boundary of the CRA.
Okay.
So, but remember, and the important thing for folks to remember at home is that I had no intention. Now, they say, well, why didn't you say that upfront? Well, because I felt it was appropriate to negotiate originally the acquisition of the property, and then negotiate after the fact, what will it be? And so we're, we're close to doing that. And I don't think that, the way that the interest is, I think we can, in very short period of time, come up with something, and then go to contract and refund and, you know, replenish where the funds have come from. So it'll be a six-month to a twelve-month use of the funds.
Okay.
But, and, and when people say, well, it was only for Danforth, if you remember, you can enter into Martin County off Ninety-Five, or the turnpike, the turnpike, only one spot, Martin Highway.
Okay.
The, you have Bridge Road, you have Canner, and you have Martin Highway. So everyone that's entering, if you're going to Jensen Beach and you're coming from the airport, you're going to get off in Palm City, and you're going to drive very quickly onto Martin Highway. And one of the first things you will see is three, you could have seen, is three three-story buildings right on the sidewalk in Palm City. It was so out of character for what should be there, that I think that that would be a legacy that I certainly wouldn't be proud of. So to hear folks that say, look, we're very disappointed in all of the development, but, you know, zoning is zoning, and you didn't have the money to do that, so you shouldn't have, is very short sighted, because my job is to represent the community, not just for this year, every year. You know, the Veterans Memorial Bridge was a very controversial project, you remember?
I do.
Meanwhile, now, in a very short period of time, people can't even comprehend what it was like not to have it.
Right.
Sailfish Blash Water Park, I get a lot of grief from some criticism from people that say that was a mistake. Meanwhile, it's, it's turned out to be a very, very successful. Now, how do you gauge the success? Different people. If you want to sort of say, well, that wasn't a good idea, then you paint a picture that it wasn't.
Right, right.
But we've had the high school, the state national, a state high school swimming and diving competitions for about eight years. And that brings money to heads in beds. And, you know, we have spring training, so I won't even, we'll do the pool another day. But yeah, so I think that I was, like you said, it was a very unique strategy. I was, I'm proud of how we were able to do that, because I think my job is to represent the constituents in my district and in the county. And that's exactly what we did.
You did. You got a three-two vote in support of it. So it was, it was definitely a very talked about project. Did the conversation ever come up, that there was a lot of HOAs that supported this, that the HOAs come together and buy the property themselves?
I saw that during your, your conversation in a previous show. HOAs, I was my HOA president for a long time. Now, depending on how people's bylaws are written, most of the time, you can't raise money within an HOA neighborhood to be spent outside of the HOA neighborhood. You know, there was talk about that if every neighborhood chipped in, you could buy it. First off, who wants their, their HOA dues to go up that much that we could afford, you know, even if you had fifteen HOAs to buy a four million dollar piece of property?
Right, right.
And I always knew that it was never going to be that. Now, it was difficult during those early negotiations to sit there and keep quiet about the second phase of it. Some people were like, he doesn't even have an idea of what he wants to do. Yes, we do. We're just, you know, a proper negotiation doesn't mean you push out all of your information at the first sit-down.
Right.
So we are on a very specific process. In terms of development in general, and what people are frustrated about in general, there's a couple of points that I have learned from our staff and, and the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council and others, that I'd like to take a minute to share.
Sure.
Because I think it's just important details that most people don't get. One, a lot of the projects that are coming out of the ground right now, look, a majority of them are in the city of Stewart, and people don't differentiate the different boards.
Right.
But that being said, I also understand that if something happens on Canner Highway in the city of Stewart, it's still in Martin County. So I don't try to push, well, that was them, and that's not us. I get it.
There are boundaries and lines, though, and there's.
And there, and people would be surprised that Walmart is in the city of Stewart, and north of the Roosevelt Bridge, you know, almost all the way up to the mall, is in the city of Stewart.
Right.
So it's not just the defined downtown that most people think is the city of Stewart.
I think that's.
And then the other thing that people And then the other thing that people don't understand is that with annexation, if you have a willing property owner and the count, and the city will, is happy to annex anybody that's going to generate additional revenue for the city, and I don't blame them. So, but we don't have a say in that. So when people say, don't let, excuse me, and they say, don't let them, that's not a thing. So the other part.
That's a big one, Commissioner Campi, actually. It really is. A lot of people don't understand the annexation process.
We should just stop them. And they have a higher density in the city of Stewart. So if a lot of folks could be ten units to the acre in the county, and it could be twenty or thirty units to the acre in the city, then of course they want to be in the city.
Right.
So the other thing that I've said to most people that will listen, and I get an opportunity to speak to groups or do things like this, which if I didn't tell you, thank you, thank you, is every parcel of property, and this is my opinion, every parcel of property in Martin County is in play. I don't know if it's the economy or the timing or whatever, but whether it's a family that owns five acres that they inherited from grandma,
Right.
they're sitting around their kitchen table thinking, what do we do with this property? Now, everything that they come up with, they think is genius and that everyone will love, even though a lot of people won't like it. The other group is large corporations that are sitting around boardroom tables and that have thousands of acres, and they're all in play.
Right.
Now, people say to me, they're like, you approve every, it seems like you approve everything that comes before you. Well, that's first off, not accurate. But secondly, if I have lots of people reach out, I'm sure my colleagues do as well, all the time, want to meet with me to discuss this great idea they have for five hundred acres over here, or a thousand acres, or four thousand acres. And quite often, I'll say to them, absolutely not. There is no appetite for that. It's not going to work. It's not a good idea. So if they don't have my support right off the bat, why would they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars with consultants and lawyers and planners and engineers to come forward when they know?
Right.
I'm a no.
Right.
So most of the time, by the time something comes to the commissioners on television, it's been vetted for probably a year or two. The biggest frustration from developers and one of the, the best defense for residents is, our process is very arduous. It's not designed to be easy. It's not in favor of the developers. If anything, they're constantly complaining that it's such a difficult process. Now, there are times when the process doesn't need to be as difficult as it is. But there's no shortcuts because there's a great expression that great men plant trees that they will never sit in the shade of. So now, I'm not saying that I'm some great man, but I do take the job and the position very seriously that I'm advocating with what I know. Now, some people say, we should vote on everything. The public should vote on every decision. Well, we're a representative republic. How it works, as you well know, is you hear from candidates, you hear what they say, and you say, that guy aligns, that woman aligns with my thinking. I'm sending them to represent me because I don't have the time or the effort or the energy to do that.
That's right.
And I've taken that, that role very seriously. I did four years and then I left, did not expect to come back. And there was a lot going on, and you know, my successor is a terrific person and jumped into a very difficult set of circumstances with lawsuits and people and commissioners being arrested and and a lot of crazy stuff. And people really said to me, would you think about coming back? Now, like you, when you have a front row seat to know what's happening in the communing community, when you're sitting outside of it, it's very frustrating.
Right.
So I obviously came back and we tried to get some things back, knocked a lot of these crazy lawsuits down and stuff like that. But quite often, decisions that are made will really tremendously affect people either positively or terribly. Uh, and so I feel very responsible for the decisions that I make, uh, the rural lifestyle.
I was gonna say, there's, there are a lot of decisions, I was just gonna bring that one up.
Lifestyle, I think, was probably one of the most impactful decisions the commission's made in decades. Because it opened up every potential piece of agricultural property um in the whole county. Now, I know that it went through several iterations. And the frustration for me was that I'm, I need to know, I call it the three Ps, and two of them are very important. I need to know the project, what is it going to be, and I need to know the place. Now, quite often, I also need to know the people because sometimes you'll get these big corporations that will come in here and say, we're going to do this, that, this, that, and this. And then if the rules and the structure of the agreement is not ironclad, all of a sudden, three, four, five years later, now maybe the commissioners are different. They'll do something else. I'm not saying that happens every time, but I'll give a great example. In Palm City, Newfield, the original Pineland Prairie, Knight Kiplinger and his family, they designed a, I call it night vision. His vision was so specific that it got a great approval from the community and the commission and the county staff. But he wasn't going to build that with his family. He was going to have to put it off with somebody else. And he was very careful to pick the way it is designed and approved. It, it's no wiggle room in that. His exact vision that the community agreed to, whether it's five years or ten years or fifteen years from now, will have to be built that way. So that's why I needed to know that. And the rural lifestyle, I voted no on, and I know some of my colleagues did, and it passed. And everybody has a different philosophy. I just felt that while I'm sitting there, I need to know specifically what is it and where is it? Because like those ninety apartments somewhere else is fine.
Right.
But the project and the place didn't work. And luckily, the people involved were nice enough because people said, well, you overpaid. Well, put it this way, if you and I, if we had millions of dollars and we built that. Now, they were very close to getting an approval. We did that deal probably August, September. They were going to come before the LPA in September and come before the commissioners in October. And by now, they would have been started on that property.
They would have.
So it wasn't far away. And so think about this, they paid two point one. They probably spent, let's just say conservatively, a half a million dollars. So now the profit that they received is one point four, and I know there was some legal twenty-eight thousand. So one point four million. What is ninety apartments worth? More than one point four million?
Right, right.
Even if you were going to run them, I mean, even if you were going to be the landlord, what's the value of ninety apartments forever? But most likely, what they probably would have done, and I don't know, is they would have gotten the, either approved the project and sold it, or approved the project, built it, and sold it off to somebody else whose job it is to run, manage apartment complexes. It's worth millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I'm actually pleased that when they came up with four million, because had they said five million or six million, we wouldn't have been able to do it.
No.
And they would be building ninety apartments on Martin Highway, and people would have said, who allowed this to happen? So I'm pleased about that, you know.
And I appreciate you coming on here today because it was kind of a controversial decision.
There's no way to tell people.
Right.
So the only opportunity, thankfully, is you.
Well, and the CRA was something that I learned about too, through you, that it, it was a much larger CRA than really, as you said, there was no basic downtown of Palm City. So when they put the CRA together, it was kind of.
And Mike, and you know, people, you know, were frustrated. They have no idea that that was a twenty-year-old decision, well before I was there. But at the time, under those set of circumstances, I would have agreed that the decision Mike DiTerlisi made was appropriate because the big issue in, in the late nineties was one supermarket is not going to work.
And you just touched on something, Commissioner Campi, that I think a lot of people don't realize is much of the zoning and regulations that are here today, they were decided twenty years ago.
Well, that's, yeah, because you don't want to be like you're zigzagging all over the place. People need consistency, and I think that that's a fair ask of anyone. Now, remember what I said when I said that everything is in play? Some of the people that come are not big corporation, national corporations. They're families. They are generational families that have lived right here. And they need to know what consistency is. Now, some people say, well, if you bought it and that was the zoning, then that's what it should be forever. That's not really a great strategy. If that were the case, and people say, well, the comp plan is the comp plan and it should never be changed. Look, I get it. You need to have a framework. But if the comp plan is never to be changed, then they can etch it in granite, and they can put it up somewhere, and people will just look at it. But that's not how you create a thriving, you know, living community. You know, golf courses for many years, ten years ago, looked like, my father's a professional golfer. It looked like the golf industry was really struggling. Young people were not going to spend four or five hours outside playing golf. They wanted to play Xbox.
Right, right.
But now magically, there's a whole new renaissance of golf.
Come back.
And we are really reaping the benefits of it because when you talk about, and it's another show, but conservation land, and how do we keep Martin County looking and feeling the way it is? Well, someone needs to own the properties.
Right.
Now, if the county owns the properties, they come off the tax roll, and then they also have to be maintained. And like anything else, it's one thing to purchase something, it's another thing to maintain it forever. Especially the residents, you know, we're going to have a, a referendum most likely in twenty twenty-four about the county raising funds to purchase properties. There are a lot of people, and I'm one of them, that thinks a referendum is the right idea. Let the people decide.
Right.
Three commissioners shouldn't decide if we should or should not do that.
This county's known.
And we've done it, and we've done it in the past. We have done referendums where we've taxed ourselves. And there's a huge percentage of Martin County acreage that is already in conservation. If you have the opportunity to see that map, it's remarkable how much has been, been preserved and reserved.
And the conservation's important because with the Live Local Act, just certain county-owned properties, they can be sold.
We could have a whole long conversation about that. If you, some people say, say no to everything. You know, it's very sort of a weird concept. I'm here, I don't want anybody else to come, say no to everything. Well, a lot of communities, and we lead the charge, which is something we can be very proud of. But in Tallahassee, they know Martin County as being pretty aggressive in terms of denials. Well, if the, if the appetite and the mood in Tallahassee changes, they'll decide, not us.
That's exactly what happened with Live Local.
With Live Local. And there are some, there are some strings attached to that, so it's not as easy as possible, but there are, at the time, when we, we really pushed back, when we first heard about it, I said, I can't be, I can't believe that's going to be the case. It's the worst example of an affront to home rule that I have ever seen in my years doing this. And for people that are not familiar, you know, become familiar, it's called the Live Local. It's a law. And now hopefully, in this legislative session, they'll make some tweaks and changes. But I said at the time, we had a press conference, and I caught some grief from Tallahassee, and people told me I should keep my mouth shut. But I thought it was important to say that, I get it. The Live Local law might be great in Palm Beach or Broward or Tampa or in Jacksonville, but not in Stewart.
Right.
So the, the con, and look, I'm a big proponent of essential housing and, you know, having housing for seniors and for veterans and for young people and for people that work here that just want to live here, you know? But that being said, a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work in every community, and that's basically what this is.
It did, it took away our home rule, and it is, it's a little frustrating, so.
How much time do we have left? None?
We, we've been over, how, how, how far are we from fifty minutes, forty-two? Well, let's talk then, let's just make this two shows. Yes.
Okay.
Let's go ahead.
It's up to you.
No, I, I really, really like to talk about that because that was another controversial.
That light heated out?
I know, we out, we out talked. We talked the light out today, so we're a little bit darker here.
Put another quarter in that light.
Iggy over here with Impactful Media is keeping us all, all rolling. But yes, you just, you just had a vote on, on taxes and whether or not they're going to be raised here in the county. That was back in November as well, it was kind of a, a big month, right?
It was actually in September.
September.
Yeah, we, how the budgeting process works is the county works through the beginning of the year. They're probably doing it now for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Basically, twenty twenty-five, I guess. They're working behind the scenes to, you know, with departments to come up with strategies on what needs to be paid for and what should be paid for, what doesn't need to be paid for. And then they have a workshop, and then we have um at five oh five, so the people that work can come. And then we have two budget hearings. And this year in twenty twenty-three, this last year, they came forward with a original during the workshop that had an increase. And, you know, look, they can come with a straight face and explain. Now, the other thing that's important for your viewers to remember, and a lot of people don't know this, and they're very surprised when they hear it, is that in Florida, we have a sunshine law. A lot of people say to me, it looks like you and those other commissioners are talking about this for the first time ever. Well, because we're not legally allowed to speak to each other
That's right.
outside of that meeting. So I have no idea what the philosophy of my colleagues might be. Now, I'm out listening to constituents, and I'm sure they are too. But, you know, Commissioner Smith said something at one of the workshops or at the hearing. He said, there's a constituency for every dollar. And that's a very astute point. Because if you don't go to the libraries, you're not a big fan of spending millions of dollars on libraries. But if you do, then that's very important to you. If, if the environment and water quality is important, if keeping the rivers are clean is important to you, especially if you live on the river, or if you have a boat, or you fish. But if you don't, it's not really your issue. Um, and as commissioners, we're responsible for really embracing every issue. So this last year, they came up with the, with the, like a four point eight percent suggested increase. There was really no appetite from us for that. And then, so we went back and we asked the staff to review it, and they did. Now, again, since there's a constituency for every dollar, and the five commissioners have their own personal beliefs, things that I don't think are important, other commissioners do, and vice versa. So with that in mind, Don Donaldson, our county administrator, and, and it was for many, many years, Jennifer Manning, decades she's been with the county doing our budgets and remarkable job, award-winning. And then she, her protege, Stephanie Merly, has now, Jennifer retired, this last budget was her last. And now Stephanie has taken over, and she has a team, and it's not an easy job. There are so many moving parts. It's a hundreds of millions of dollars budget. And, and like we said, if you were doing a budget with Tim at home, you can do whatever you want. There's, your next-door neighbors are not going to ring the doorbell, so we don't like that.
Right.
But our budget, everyone has a say. Most people don't get involved, but the ones that do are, are interesting.
Very involved.
So we did the budget, and then they, and we don't get, we won't get too deep into the details. But I was frustrated by some of it because I call it the three I's. I like to boil things down to easy little tidbits of information.
Okay.
For me, the three I's this last year, twenty twenty-three, and again in twenty twenty-four, is interest rates, insurance, and inflation. Most of us are dealing with those three things.
Right.
So I didn't feel that the county should come forward with a budget that showed any increase because of interest rates, inflation, and, and insurance. Now, I, my wife and I moved because our three children that we raised in Palm City in our house, a five-bedroom house, they're grown.
Right.
And they're gone.
Right.
So we didn't need a five-bedroom. So magically, two years ago, we sold and we rented. But I went from my very low interest rate to a six-point eight-two-five percent interest rate, which I lucked out getting because it very quickly went over seven.
Right.
Now, I don't have a tremendous mortgage, but I get the concept that interest rates, it affected me personally. I went from a relatively new house that was cinder block with a concrete roof to a forty-year-old wooden house with a thirty-year-old roof.
That makes a big difference with insurance.
So my insurance went from like thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars to nine thousand. And I was lucky to get nine thousand because some of the quotes were fourteen thousand.
Wow.
And so I got a, a local insurance agent, who I should almost tell you her name because she saved me thousands of dollars.
Wow.
So for people that are out there trying to find their own insurance.
Right.
Go to an agent, you know? Go to an agent, let them do the work because it's thousands of dollars of savings.
That's right.
And then inflation, look, I get it, everything is more expensive. I work a regular job, I'm not a full-time commissioner, I have an actual job. And, you know, my kids are grown, but they're not all completely off the payroll.
Right.
So they're not as expensive as they used to be, but they're still expensive.
Right.
And so everybody else, we're doing the same thing. And um, so I didn't want to send that message. Now, uh, the budget was very sound that they came forward with, and I disagreed with some of it. And so we went back and forth, and then, like you've heard, this was one of the first times. And Jennifer Manning, I asked her, so imagine for thirty years, everyone, the, no one comes to the budget workshops, you know, one or two people. This, you know, someone rev them up, and there was a big crowd. I'm happy with a crowd because, like I said, the most frustrating portion of my job is educating and informing the residents
Right.
so that they know why we're making these decisions.
Right.
Now, social media platforms like Nextdoor, you get one person who has an idea or thinks they know what they know, and they put it out there, and I feel it's so much easier to scare people than it is to reassure them. So, you know, they say that a lie can get halfway across town before the truth's got its pants on. And so I believe that, you know, someone will put that out, and there'll be ninety comments where they're just going back and forth, and none of it is accurate.
Right.
So I'm thinking, do I go online and start typing in? Now, the initial instinct is yes. But then the other instinct is no.
You'll never win the battle online.
So you know, so it's tough to play that out. So again, I say thank you to you for doing this, because you know, I know that thousands of people will see this either right now or in the future, because I can't watch all of your shows immediately.
Right.
But your archive is, your website's very easy, so I'll go, and I'm like, oh, that's interesting, because I'm learning things about other categories that I don't get a first, you know, firsthand information on. So I'm learning from you, so to sit here in these chairs when I've seen this is very helpful. So, so from a budget point of view, they came back with a, with a much pared-down budget. Now, the other thing I tell people is, if you and I had the budget, and we had two red Sharpies, and we said we have to cut $100 million out of the budget, and it's just my decision and your decision, we could do it. We could do it. I work a regular job, and I've worked many other jobs, big corporate jobs. 20 years ago, when I lived in New York, where when the boss called and said, shave the money out of your budget, you did.
Right.
But that was, you know, the departments and the divisions that I ran, it was my decision. It wasn't like I showed it, and then four other people that I didn't get to talk to ahead of time. So now it also gets a little tricky, because now I don't wanna insult my colleagues. We're working very carefully to be collegial and respectful of each other's opinions. And there were some times when that wasn't easy to do. There's a lot of personalities up there. But my ultimate goal, one of the things I hear consistently from residents and constituents is, get along. It just looks distasteful if we don't. As well as the fact that my children and my parents are watching. So I'm gonna work as hard as I can to be respectful of my colleagues, even if I have to bite my thumb. So that being said, I was, you know, they're passionate about their positions, I'm passionate about mine. And, and then now we have 100 people in the crowd. And so I kept saying, because they, they were wrapped up on the concept of, it's only gonna be a 0.89% increase. I'd said, zero is zero, and everything other than a zero is an increase. It will get lost in translation that it was less than 1%.
Right.
Four of my colleagues saw it differently, and I could see their point. So when we were negotiating back and forth, in my head, as you know, I'm passionate about this, I am articulate, and I wanna talk a lot. Because I'm hoping that I will say something that will convince and shine a different light on something that my colleagues, and I'll give Commissioner Jenkins a lot of credit, because he's done it repeatedly. He might come in with an opinion. After doing his research and his life experience, he's got an opinion, not just about the budget, anything.
Right.
And what I give him so much credit for is he is willing to hear his colleagues out, and the public out, and the staff out, and be willing to make a change of his opinion. And that's remarkable.
That is remarkable, and it's important.
A long time ago, when he first got there, and you know, we were trying to like get to know each other, he was brand new, and I was back. And you know, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hurd had been there for a long time, had worked with both of them. Commissioner Heatherington was there. But I remember Commissioner Jenkins in particular, being willing to hear other opinions and say, that's a good idea, not so locked in to his personal opinion, or his ego would not allow him to make a change. So I always give him credit. So I'm always trying to think, like, what can I say? Because he was jokingly saying that he was gonna stab me in the neck with the pencil.
Right.
Several times. My mother said.
That made the paper.
Several times, Commissioner Jenkins said he was gonna stab me. So I was trying to get him not only not to stab me, but to see if I could bring him to my, that's how the whole democratic process works. I wasn't able to, and I get it. They're probably looking at me like I'm crazy, because each of these departments need to be funded. But if you don't have the money, or in our case, we're trying, I'm trying to send a message to the public that we get it. I get it.
Right.
I'm not wealthy. I'm not poor, but I'm not wealthy. And so, and I'm working, like I said, and my wife works, and so, and I work exclusively on commission.
Okay.
So you know, if the economy's going up and down, I'm going up and down. It's not a guarantee, and you know, it's an expression, anybody who's in sales that commissions, you eat what you kill. So I know what people are up against. And so with that in mind, I just wanted it to be that. So as the chair, I have to call the vote, and we had a long conversation. I have to call the vote, and then, you know, which was to accept the way they put it together. And so I, all those in favor, they said aye. All those opposed, I said oppose. Now, when you watch the tape on, it's September 19th, no, excuse me, it's the September 12th.
Okay.
And the, we had a regular meeting, and then we had the budget hearing at the end of the day, so it's, it's like a nine-hour tape.
Very long day, yes.
So at 8 minutes and 40 seconds, we start getting right close to the vote. And I say, look, you know, let's do zero, let's do zero. And then I realized, it's not gonna go that way. And I have to be smart enough to understand that, you know, I'm not gonna poke them in the eye, and that's it. Now, what you don't see on the tape is it goes from like 8:40, 8 hours and 40 minutes, to like 8:45. However, we took a half an hour to a 45-minute break. It doesn't show that. They, they edit it back together, so it looks like bum bum. Like, wait a second, you changed your mind.
That quickly.
Well, because the budget people went upstairs and had to rework everything with the new numbers.
Okay.
And so when they came back, now for the 45 minutes that I'm gone, now remember, at the next meeting, we're gonna vote on whether or not we're gonna buy the property on Martin Highway.
Right.
So how aggressive do I wanna be with these guys?
Right.
And now, I, I told you earlier that I'm trying to be, you know, respectful of their different opinions. I would hope that they would do it for me. But we went from a four to one for, yes, you can consider purchasing the property. But at the next meeting, it's yes or no, do we buy it?
Right.
And so I did not want to do a situation where I brought 200 people from Palm City or elsewhere to come and start, you know, yelling at commissioners. I wouldn't want them to do that to me, I wouldn't do that to them.
Right.
But a lot of people come, do we need to go to this meeting? Do we need to go to this meeting? I said, well, I had a four to one. And since the appraisal worked, I could do a three-two.
Right.
So I could afford to lose one person. And so I did that. So now we're at the budget. This is real inside politics. Now we're at the budget, and I figured, all right, we had the 45 minutes. I wasn't gonna win on zero.
Right.
So now we're gonna go very quickly, and it's a legal process, where you say, okay, here's the first one, you know, vote yes. All in favor, all opposed, all like, there's certain, they do them in different budgetary categories. Fire rescue is separate, the airport is separate. There are some that are just obviously yeses, because they're like, the building department is, it's its own revenue. We don't, we don't have to put money into it, it's self-sustaining.
Got it.
Parks and Rec, you know, people are angry that, you know, the parks has some things that folks think should be handled in the, in the private sector.
Yep.
Well, on the other hand, the things that they do, like the snack bars at the beach, and the golf course and things like that, have generated, you know, collectively, the whole department generated enough, enough money to be self-sustainable.
Wow.
So if you give those things away, then be prepared to write big checks. Or if you allow them to run it a little bit like a business, then they might be able to run it like a business. So it's, it's, it's hard to know where do you do it and where do you don't. So when we get to those individual votes, I said at the beginning, I said, look, you know, the negotiation is over, it is what it is. And to collectively look like we're a unified board, I will vote yes on the individual budget items.
All right.
Because at that point, it's done.
Right.
I, the negotiate, I did not win, and I could not convince my colleagues. And four to one is pretty legit. You know, Commissioner Hurd is obviously not an easy budget vote.
Right.
And so for her to feel comfortable enough that the budget was designed in such a way that she would vote yes, which for historically, she's always been a no, whether I liked it or not, she has always sort of taken the no curtain.
Right.
I just felt in my mind that, you know, to look like a uniformed board, I should vote with them on the individual items. So that's when people say, well, you did vote for the budget. I didn't. But once it's all over, but the hand-ringing, you know, then, yeah, do you support the fire budget? I do. Do you support the Parks and Rec budget, and the public works, and the library? Yes, I do.
And I think Commissioner Campy, that's probably one of the tougher things about being an elected official at any level, is, is the give and take. There's gotta be times, and I've seen it, as an elected official, you have to vote for something that you personally do not believe in. And, but you have to for the greater good of the body.
I will give an example of that, because sometimes we have no choice. Like I said earlier, if something is legally permissible, which is always a trick, it's legally permissible.
Right.
So that means that someone's gonna come forward, and it could be terrible, you know, it could be. And I'll just give an example, in Palm City, where the, where the Wawa is. There's a, there's about four or five different, six different pads for different items there. The Tractor Supply was first. Now, that's the site where it was supposed to be at Costco, and it was very controversial, Costco, no Costco. And that's a whole story for another day, even though that ship has sailed.
Yes.
So there's a Wawa, which is interesting. I mean, I like, excuse me, there's a, the first one to open was the Tractor Supply, which if you haven't been, is a very interesting store.
It is.
And we go very rural very quickly, soon as you cross the turnpike, so I get it. And my wife and I have been there tons of times.
Quick vet clinic there, by the way.
Which is great. And they have a dog washing thing for $9.99. You go in and wash your dog, and then leave, and they clean it all up.
Right, right.
And the store is great. So that, okay, and then they're gonna do a Wawa, and then there's gonna do, there've been a car wash, and they've been bouncing around. But in the back, in one of the last spots, this group comes forward, we got a great idea, it's gonna be so exciting, you're gonna love it. I won't tell you what it is until the end. So we go back and forth. I don't love it.
All right.
And, but they're legally allowed.
Okay.
So they come forward, and I'm asking, can't you do something else? It's a very unique spot there. You have entrance and exit to 95, and entrance and exit to the turnpike. That only happens in a couple of spots.
Okay.
Indian Town Road.
Right.
Palm City, up in Fort Pierce. So that's a really coveted spot. So how about a restaurant, or a hotel, or something that's appropriate? Instead, the two things that I think Martin County, and most people will agree, that Martin County has lots of, is assisted living facilities and storage facilities.
Right.
So this group comes forward and says, we're gonna build 100,000 square foot, three-story-tall storage facility on that site. I'm like, please, think of anything else. Because if you're not storing stuff in there, it has no benefit for you as a spot in your community.
Right.
A restaurant does, a store, retail, medical plaza, something else, the community universally could benefit from it. If you're not, I always say, Martin County, we're good at storing our old people and our extra stuff. So, but if you're not putting someone in an assisted living facility, or you're not storing your stuff, those businesses mean nothing to you. And so they came forward, and I tried as hard as I could to get them to do something else, and they said, we're legally allowed to. That was their whole presentation. We are legally allowed to. So I voted no. Now luckily, my colleagues still voted yes, because they could have sued us.
Right.
And gotten it. But yeah, so your point about how frustrating it is to vote for stuff, and they're gonna build that, and then people will be like, you voted for that? I'm like, I didn't vote for it, but it still got built.
But it's still, yes, because it was legally allowed.
Legally permissible.
Commissioner Campy, this has been wonderful.
I appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate you coming in here today. We've talked a lot of subjects.
If you, if you're okay, I'll come back in a year or six months or whatever.
Definitely, I know.
The last thing I'd like to tell you is, in an effort to continue to educate anyone, I do it in collaboration with the Palm City Chamber, but once a month, I have something I call Dish with the Commish. And you know, it's similar to this, but I get to sit in your seat.
Okay.
And I bring someone in each month, and we do about an hour and 15 minutes at the, at the Charlie Leighton Park. And the Palm City Chamber has a small portion of the Charlie Leighton Park Community Center.
Okay.
And so I've had Susan Corris and Jordan from the CRA to explain for an hour. And then I've had Brian Mast, Congressman Mast, last month. And now this month, I'm having Luke Lambert, who is our traffic engineer, because everyone wants to talk about traffic lights, and it's timing and signaling. Let's, let's hear from the source.
Right.
Dr. Rishi Singh is gonna be one of my guests, from the president of the hospital, and Sheriff Snyder, and I've had the chief, the fire chief, and, and I've had Blake Fontanet to let people meet him. And we do a little quick, it's free. And so if anyone wants to come, they can call my office and come by, maybe I have to have you and talk about the fair.
We will do that. We definitely will do that.
We were gonna do it every other month, and we realized there's so many topics to cover, and we get decent crowd. You get between, you know, 75 and 150 people come.
People have the opportunity to learn and figure out how things are decided, and.
And then they go out and spread the word, and that's how, you know.
Dish with the commish.
Dish with the commish. But I, I speak to this HOA every year. We do a long like this, but Q and A. And as a joke, two years ago, I said, well, you know, it's so hard to get the information out. I stand at the corner of, of Martin Downs Boulevard and High Meadows, and I do like the town crier, and I just yell out the no's. I was kidding. The next day, two different people called my office to find out when I do that.
When you're gonna stand on the corner.
So I don't have to do that now, because I have you.
Right, right, absolutely. Always a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
You always have an open invitation. We do appreciate it.
Open invitation. You heard that, you heard her say it, open invitation.
Commissioner Campy's gonna be coming back.
That's right. Thank you so much. And I look forward to moving you out west.
Yes, we're gonna talk about that some more, and my pleasure, remember, at the end of this broadcast, February 9th to 17th, it's our 65th fair here in Martin County.
We'll be there.
And we're still here in Stewart this year.
That's right. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you.
Bye.